Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for a second time this week. We appreciate it. We're excited to be here. It's been a long journey to get to this point and talk about the removal of portables and the renovation of these schools. So we've got John Shipe here from Northeast Collaborative to give us a 10 to 15-minute kind of overview and presentation, and then we're excited to open it up to public comment. A little kind of direction as to where we're headed after this meeting. We are headed back to the board table, I think, May 11th, where we'll be presented with educational specifications for these schools. So that's the next step in the process is to go through the EdSpecs. For those of you that have been with us along the journey of Ox Ridge, we will review, discuss, ask questions about the EdSpecs, and then they will go to a vote. Once those EdSpecs are voted upon, they will be moved to the first selectmen's office for the first selectmen to form a building committee. And once that building committee is formed, that building committee will work to take the project forward and work with the RTM. If you remember the process, we actually had to go to the RTM for funding based on the state guidelines of what you need to do to get state funding for these construction projects. So that'll all play out with the building committee. The good news is, the building committee has done and continues to do a fantastic job with Ox Ridge. It will be a new separate building committee. So we'll move forward with that once the first selectman takes control of that. Tonight's presentation, the one thing, if everyone remembers going through this, and it's fun to look at design, it's fun to look at the pictures, it's fun to look at all of that, but keep in mind, as you go through the process of one of these projects, these are the concepts that come out of it. So nothing here is set in stone. It's just concepts to get us to the next level, to understand what we can do and how we can do it, to remove the portables, do some educational upgrades at these schools, do the library re-imagine and stuff like that. So, you know, that'll all come to fruition as you go through the building project, building committee, project timeline with hiring architects and construction managers and stuff like that. So I would ask not to get so hung up on the look and feel of it, but the concept and what we're trying to do around the schoolrooms, the music rooms, removing the portables, and, you know, doing some good stuff with these schools that the individual schools and the administration has spent a lot of time looking at. The facilities committee has done a great job bringing this to the board table. So I just want to kind of tee that up a little bit. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Adley.
Yes, just a few words, not many, but it's nice to be here this evening for this purpose. Certainly, one of the highest priorities on the entry plan for me when I got here with our parents and community members and staff and actually Board Two, were the removal of the portable. So it's nice actually to be here this evening to see the proposal that has come before the board, that's going to serve the community well for 20, 30-plus years. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over to John Shipe, Board Member Nomis, Dr. Shipe, and he's going to quickly walk us through where we are at the moment.
Thank you, Dr. Adley, and thank you to the members of the Board of Education. It is a pleasure to be here and present this to you. It represents a culmination of a strong effort to re-envision the three elementary schools, Holmes, Hindley, and Royal, to see them reimagined and developed in new ways. So I will go through this overview, that we're going to look at the analysis of the needs very briefly. I think those have been pretty well stated, and we can then review the design concepts. Again, these are just conceptual designs of what is possible for the improvement of the three schools, and then taking a look at the scope of work, the estimate, and the timeframe. And those are really the most important things that come away from this and carry the process forward. So the needs, I think we've talked a good amount about them, and to just summarize, removal of the portable classrooms at the three schools is a strong need. You can see the image here of the portables at Hindley. And I think that alone is such an important driver, and that allows the conceptual ability to move these designs forward. So we were looking at enhancing library and media centers, developing the EdSpecs, as Chairman Denee mentioned, was to allow us to then enhance the use of space in all three buildings. Incorporating the Long Range Capital Plan was included, so that planned improvements of these schools, roofs, exteriors, MEP, the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems, all of those get upgraded as part of this, as part of this study. And then looking at the remaining items from the 2016 KG&amp;D study, both from the building perspective and from the site perspective, there are some site components that are needs as well at these three schools. So taking that into summary, it's a comprehensive look at the three schools. What's very important also is now to think of what makes this all possible? The, why renovate these three schools and bring them up to current standards and then bring them to a strong use for the next 20 to 30 years? The quality of the maintenance at each building, since the renovations and major renovations and additions were done back in the late 90s or mid to late 90s, these schools have been very well maintained, very well cared for. There are sustained enrollment projections for the coming eight to 10 years. The commitment of the administration, teachers, and staff at each school is readily apparent. The idea of the optimal class size, the standard adopted by, in Darien, having smaller class sizes allows for more opportunities with the existing spaces. And then utilization of existing sites, there's certainly not a lot of land available. And the way these buildings are configured on their sites with parking and fields, there are still opportunities for improvement, as we'll see. So with that, the design goals were really to look at all the things we talked about in the needs and do it comprehensively. The portables, the libraries converting to New Learning Commons, enhancing classroom size and count, infrastructure improvements, and site work improvements. Classroom count at each school, taking a look at enrollments and then the components involved, Hindley, 24, Holmes, 24, and Royal, 22. So at Hindley, the general overview of the design is that the addition will contain new music rooms, new learning commons, and two new classrooms on the second floor. The DLC program moves to Ox Ridge, opening up some internal space within the existing building, and then classrooms and specialized spaces are included in a renovation. So on the overview, looking at the big picture on the site, the addition proposed would be at the southeast portion of the site, which is the upper right on the plan image. The portables are grayed out to the east of the building or up on the image, and then the library and media center is demolished. So what this does is, you'll see there's a consistent thread to all the projects, that the original buildings, taking Hindley as an example, the original building at Hindley is restored and renovated, the additions done in the 90s and more recent are renovated, but the library and media center that was done in between is removed, and then the portables are removed. So we're taking the best vintage of every possible building and using those as the existing to move forward with, and then adding on where and as appropriate. So looking at the plan, then, the addition, again, to the top of the page, the first floor image there shows the overall building where it says Music and Learning Commons, though that is where the new addition is. Again, just to flip back for a moment, that's the area in yellow on the overall site plan to help orient. And then looking at it again on plan, the music rooms and learning commons are in the new addition at that location. So certain things also to highlight, the DLC moving to Ox Ridge, that allows for those rooms to be renovated to general classrooms on the second floor, which is on the lower right of the image here. So the both floor plans are on one image. The second floor addition contains two new classrooms. The remainder of Hindley, specifically, the central portion of the building, of the original building, receives the significant amount of renovation of classrooms and offices and specialized learning spaces. At Holmes, similarly, there's an addition that includes the music program, two classrooms, and some specialized learning spaces. The Learning Commons at Holmes is renovated, so the existing library area becomes renovated, so that a new space is created within the existing footprint, and then certain other specialized learning spaces are renovated at Holmes. So taking a look at the site plan now, the new addition to Holmes, in this case, now north is to the right, so up on the page, the new addition is actually to the west, more or less northwest of the existing building. Those portables are grayed out, and then the library and media center is indicated as a renovated area within the existing building. So looking at the floor plan, the addition again is to the upper portion of the page, northwest of the, mostly of the existing building. The first floor contains the music program spaces and a general classroom. This floor plan shows where the Learning Commons area is renovated from the former library media center, and then specialized learning spaces, including OT, PT, SPRB, are indicated in the brown or tan areas. On the upper level of Holmes, again, the new addition is the area indicated to the upper portion of the page, world language classroom, general classroom, and I believe SPRB is in that new addition on the upper level there. So overall, Holmes has the smallest of the additions, but it has the largest media center renovation. It has also the infrastructure and site scope as well. At Holmes, one of the site components is to look at the property to the north of the building where potential parking and drive could be added, so some supplemental parking at Holmes. So moving to Royal, again, the concept for Royal is somewhat similar to Hindley in that the music classrooms are added as new, Learning Commons is also added as new. There are four new classrooms at Royal, partially because one of the programmatic elements at Royal is to demolish the building from the 1950s that has four classrooms in it. ELP moves to Ox Ridge, and renovations to classrooms and specialized spaces as part of the renovation. So taking a look at Royal, Royal is a, on the site here, the existing library media center is demoed, the four classroom building from the 1950s is also demolished, and then the portables are removed, and there is a singular new addition to the north of Royal, north is now up on the page on this image. So taking a look at the plan, very similar to how Hindley is arranged, Learning Commons, the music spaces, and then the four classrooms, all on one floor, because at the north side of Hindley, at the north side of Royal, it is a one-story building. The multi-story building only is part of the main L shape of the building. So the renovation contains the major renovations to specialized learning spaces, especially where ELP relocates to Ox Ridge, and then other spaces are converted to larger classrooms. So this gives the overall overview of the three different schools, and how, again, as a concept, this is how they can be transformed into the, to new schools that are vastly improved from where they are now. The, looking at costs, and I'll just give the quick overview, each line item here on the costs, we're looking at the addition to Hindley, the demolish and site, this is for demolishing the library media center and improvements to that site area. Removal and site is the removal of portables and the improvement to that site area. Major renovation is for the majority, again, of the oldest part of Hindley that would receive the renovations. Minor renovations are areas such as the conversion of the DLC classrooms to new classrooms. Infrastructure improvements at Hindley, again, taken from the five-year master plan and from remaining items on the KG&amp;D report. And then site scope at Hindley involves exploring the bus drive, optimizing the bus drive, and the potential for access to Route One. So the overall, including soft costs, the overall total range for Hindley, looking at 21.7 to 23.17 million for that project. At Holmes, again, because of the smaller size of the addition, looking at 3.5 to 3.75 million for that addition. Removal and site is the area that would be, where the portables would be removed, and that site area improved. Major renovation, this is the library media center. Minor renovation is to spaces, classroom spaces that would be converted into specialized learning areas. Infrastructure at Holmes, this is where we have the $5 to $5.7 million for infrastructure. To be clear, this includes the HVAC and building system improvements that are, for which I believe the design is already in the works, but the actual cost of construction of this would be as part of this project. And then the site scope again at Holmes is the area to the north, the Curtis property to the north, looking at the potential for site additional parking and access to that. So at Holmes, 15.225 million to 17.64 million, again, include those costs, including soft costs for the project. Royal, at Royal, so the cost of the addition here is the largest, so it has the largest cost impact, 5.5 to 5.75 million. Demolition and site, again, that's the library media center area, as well as the four classroom that, for that 1950s four classroom building. Removal and site, this is removal of the portables and enhancement of that site area. The major renovation at Royal, 4.25 to 4.5 million, largely for the second floor, as well as minor renovations. Again, this is areas where the ELP program is being relocated to Ox Ridge. Infrastructure improvements at Royal were not as, not as many projects are, on this, as part of this project, there are already projects underway and improvements being enacted at Royal, so 2.5 to 2.75. And then site scope improvements would be taking a look at, again, bus drive access and parent drive access. So for a total of 18.935 to 20.44 million, again, including those soft costs. The timeframe to, I believe that from here, as was mentioned, the EdSpecs will be done shortly, and then things move to, we'll be reviewing that on the next slide, actually, about next steps. But overall, design review and approvals, expected to take about 1.5 years, one and a half years. Construction, major activity can begin in June 2023 and take approximately two years. These are planned as concurrent projects, so depending on construction delivery method, they can be combined into one package. So taking a look at the next steps about how things move to the next level. The Board of Education is holding the public hearing today, April 29th. The administration presents the EdSpecs to the Board of Ed May 11th. Those would be voted on on May 25th. The Board of Education would pass the resolution requesting that the Board of Selectmen form a citizens' building committee for the project outline in the EdSpecs. The next step after that, really, things move over to the Board of Selectmen, but essentially, the hope is that a building committee is appointed by the, by middle of August. And then from there, the building committee would review and decide on project delivery methods, design team, construction teams, selections, and so on. And then, that's why, backing up from June 2023, the 1.5 years really starts at the beginning or right around the very end of this year, very beginning of 2022, giving you about 1.5 years to get to June of 2023. So that is our brief overview of, again, the conceptual level at a high level to understand how these buildings can be transformed, addressing all the needs that they have, and looking in general at layout, scope, and then approximate costs and the timeframe to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. This was kind of a high-level snapshot overview for those of you out there in Zoomland joining us. I know many people have been along the journey as this has progressed, so there's a lot of information out there. For those of you just joining this evening or getting involved and looking at the project, this is a high-level overview for you. So there's plenty of information out there, so please take the time to look through it as this project moves forward. With that, we'll move over to Michelle and public comment.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during tonight's public hearing, please click the participant icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. Courtney Pear, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, this is Courtney Pear at 5 Knollwood Lane. Do we love Royal School? Emphatically, yes. Royal is everything we dreamed of for our children. Well, almost everything. We have outstanding leadership, top-notch teachers and staff, and a community of families like no other. What we don't have is a facility to match this excellence. My son, who's now in fifth grade, has had a knee injury, an ankle injury, and major surgery over the course of his time at Royal, resulting in his need to ride the elevator from floor to floor in the school. At first, he thought it was cool, because he got to invite a friend to ride the elevator with him, but then I would hear complaints like, "The elevator is so slow. I missed out on a fun activity because I was stuck in that slow elevator. I missed half of lunch because I was stuck in the slow elevator." Or, "What am I supposed to do when I need to go to gym or the common room or music?" There are stairs with a not very convenient lift, making it very challenging for someone with an injury or disability to access the gym, common room, first grade wing, and portables at Royal. Oh, the portables. Portables are meant to be temporary. We've been at Royal for six years, and the portables are still there. They're a safety issue and need to be removed. We love Royal School, but it's time to update the building. We have the administration, the staff, the students, and the families. Now we need the facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Pear.
Belinda Feng, you are unmuted and recognized.
At 22 Beach Road Drive. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and Joanna Walsh as the Hindley PTO co-presidents. Five years, two superintendents, and three Hindley principals ago, KG&amp;D architects delivered a master plan to address structural and educational issues with Darien's facilities. The plan stated that the most notable educational concern is the continued use of modular classrooms at the elementary schools. At the time, these temporary structures were an average of 25 years old, meaning some were even older. Now these portables are about 30 years old. Despite heroic efforts from Mike Lynch's district team and our custodians, the portables are not the equivalent of a regular classroom. Students are exposed to the elements when they move from the portables to the school building and vice versa. There are no bathrooms, no sinks, not enough room, and too much security and weather exposure. Additionally, Joanna Walsh and I are proponents of giving students adequate learning space so that they can not only thrive but succeed, both academically and socially. We believe having well-lit, good acoustics, and open working spaces are critical in fostering better relationships between teacher and student, and equally as important, between student and student. It enables students who may not seem like they have much in common on the surface level to listen and hear one another, to sit alongside each other and have intentional, purposeful touchpoints together. Whether it be at a large group table or a spacious media center, these are all spaces in the plans that are designed to maximize interactions, improve communication, forge friendship, and understanding. In less-than-optimal portable classrooms, students cannot be expected to learn important subjects like math, music, and world language, let alone have meaningful interactions with one another. When a community invests in learning space, it gives our youth the necessary environment that makes way for critical thinking, bolsters innovation and creativity. It makes our children feel valued and worthy, like they belong and like they are right where they are supposed to be in the safety and security of their school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Feng.
Angela Boyle-Altoy, you are unmuted and recognized.
Mrs. Altoey, can you hear us?
Yep, and thank you. Angela Boyle-Altoy, 36, Coach Lamp Lane. First of all, thanks to the Board of Ed for your work in this project, but also wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for your efforts in keeping the kids in school as much as they have been during this pandemic. I certainly feel very fortunate, so thank you. In terms of the plans that we've just had a chance to review, I'd like to express my support, particularly in getting rid of the portables across the district. When I moved to Darien five years ago and my son started kindergarten at Hindley, I was shocked to discover that there were portables in use. In a town such as this, with the resources we have, I think it's astonishing that we have these 30-year-old portables still in use, which by their very design were meant to be temporary. My biggest concern is the safety and security of our children. These portables are not secure, while we may have security cameras in our schools, there is nothing stopping anyone from entering the school grounds and walking right up to these portables, and the doors do not strike me as being very secure. We also have children going back and forward alone between the portables and the main building for the bathroom, and it's simply not safe, not to mention doing this during the winter or inclement weather. Darien Public Schools have a great reputation, which we all know, which bolsters our real estate prices. As a community, whether you have children within the public school system or not, I believe it's in everyone's best interest to make the necessary investments in our schools to ensure Darien remains the attractive family location it is in the long term. My children will be out of Hindley by the time this work would be completed. Therefore, I make these points not for the benefit of my kids, but for the benefit of the whole community, to support our real estate prices and the tax base going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Alto.
Kim Bravo-Ferreira, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, my name is Kim Bravo-Ferreira, and I live at 5 Morehouse Drive. I have two children at Royal, one in kindergarten, I mean, sorry, one in first grade and one in fourth. I am speaking tonight in support of the proposed Royal renovations. I would like to thank the Board and the administration for putting forth a comprehensive plan to address the facility concerns at Royal, as well as Darien's other elementary schools. I would also like to urge the Board to tackle these renovations concurrently with Hindley and with the Hindley and Holmes projects. It's no secret to parents that Royal has outgrown its current footprint and is in need of more classrooms with adequate space. In fact, this past year, we had two fifth-grade classes that used portable, portables. Prior to this year, they were used for specials, which meant our youngest students were traveling outside the building, creating a safety concern. This is far from ideal for many obvious reasons. This is far from ideal for many obvious reasons. Further, the proposed renovations will provide for universal accessibility with a ramp on the first floor rather than multiple small stairways, eliminating the need for additional elevators and a lift. The need for facility renovations is not a new concern. Simply put, our community has grown significantly over the years. We can only make do for so long when it comes to providing our children with a safe and responsible learning environment. The Board and Administration have put together a thoughtful plan to address the...
Ms. Ferreira, you are muted.
Sorry about that. Um, the need for facility renovations is not a new concern. Simply put, our community has grown significantly over the past years. We can only make do for so long when it comes to providing a child, our children with safe and responsible learning environment. The Board and Administration have put together a thoughtful plan to address these concerns at Royal, Hinley, and Homes. And it makes sense and would be most efficient to address the Royal renovations concurrently with Hinley and Homes. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Ferreira.
Julie Best, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, I'm Julie Best, 38 Red Rose Circle. I am a co-chair of the Council Darien School Parents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am beyond excited that we're here this evening at a public hearing about removing portables and renovating the three elementary schools where those portables are located. Parents and CDSP have been asking for this for years, lots and lots and lots of years. So it is incredibly exciting that this day has arrived. We look forward to seeing the project get underway, and while we're confident that these conversations are happening, we have a few requests as you get started. Please make sure to keep parents and taxpayers up to speed on how these renovated schools will be able to provide, excuse me, comparable educational experiences to the new elementary schools in town, meaning Tokenique and Oxbridge, new. Be cautious not to underestimate potential enrollment impacts of new or pending developments in town. Um, and we understand that doing all three of these projects at once could bring, I suppose, some efficiencies of scale, and we do appreciate the urgency to address the needs of all the schools as soon as possible. We also hope that each school will receive the full consideration of their specific needs and all the necessary resources that they would get from a standalone project. Um, again, we are super excited to see this project getting started, and we thank you for your hard work and thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Best.
Username Steph's iPhone, you are unmuted and recognized.
Mrs. Ico, can you hear us? Breaking up, Mrs. Ico.
And I am, can you hear me?
We are, you're breaking up.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay.
Please state your address again, please. Thank you. You're breaking up, Mrs. Ico.
Hi.
Is there another phone you can dial in on? Mrs. Ico, see if you can dial in another line, and we'll look for your name. Let's move on, Michelle.
Mary Connell Lipton, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, thanks very much. I think that was Steph Desai, our Royal PTO president. So if she's unable to get in, hopefully, um, I can, uh, take up some of the things that she was hoping to say. Thanks for, for your time and for your attention to this. I think basically, really just want to echo what everyone has said, and in particular with respect to the portables. I'm at 180 Middlesex Road. If I didn't say that, I have two daughters who are at Royal, one in second grade and a fifth grader who happens to be in one of the portals. So I do have personal experience with, um, the challenges. Absolutely echo the safety concern, um, the fact that these children are, are outside and not subject to the same kind of lockdown procedure, um, that the rest of the school is. That is certainly a concern, and I think it's a ticking time bomb that the, the, you know, God forbid we would ever face that. But if it happened with respect to a portable, I think we would really be kicking ourselves. So I think the time is, is now. Certainly echo the comments about having to go back and forth between buildings for bathroom, inclement, inclement weather. Even more mundane things, just being able to do art projects and not having a sink in the classroom. It, it really takes away, um, from the learning experience. And so that's been a, a concern. And just as recently as yesterday, we have S-Backs coming up and our, the classroom teacher had to send a note saying, "Please make sure your children get to school a few minutes early so we can get our testing done ahead of recess" because we back right up to the, to the playground, and I really don't want it to be distracting. These are real issues. If these kids are being put at risk, um, because they're having to contend with recess and thin walls and a portable for their standardized testing. So I think for all the reasons that everyone stated, which I would wholeheartedly echo and what I've outlined here, we're very much in favor of, of moving forward with this and thank the Board for their attention. Um, thank you.
Mrs. Lipton, thank you. Who's, what is the name of the other person we should be looking for? We want to make sure we give her time.
Stephanie Desai.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Michelle.
Ms. Desai, you are unmuted. You want to try again?
I will try again. I apologize. We have lost...
No apologies needed. You sound clearer now. Thank you.
We, we've lost internet in this part of town four times, uh, in the past few days. So, um, again, my name is Stephanie Desai. I live at 5 Midbrook Lane, and I am co-chair of the Royal PTO. I am speaking on behalf of the PTO and as a parent of a fifth grader, fourth grader, and a kindergartner. The Royal PTO supports the Board of Education's proposed renovation plan to remodel our school's outdated and undersized facilities. The Royal School Building was constructed in 1948 and is in desperate need of renovation and alteration in order to elevate it to the standards of a 21st century learning environment. The pandemic has highlighted the fact that we have outgrown our space. Our building has fewer classrooms than other district elementary schools, and our classroom spacing is significantly smaller. As such, two fifth-grade classes were moved to the portables this year, which been a, which has been a subpar learning experience at best. The portables lack adequate ventilation, the heating and cooling is inconsistent, and the children must, must walk outside and into the main building to use restrooms and access school facilities, not to mention the security risks. Prior to the pandemic, the portables were used as our music classrooms, where lessons were held almost every class period, resulting in a literal revolving door of children moving in and outside of the main building. Royal is pleased that the renovation plan proposes the removal of the portables in addition of grade-level classrooms, which would put us on par with elementary classroom space across the district. Royal also supports the proposed new school library space, music rooms, and increased classroom size, all of which are much needed. One additional item, the first-floor staircase in the Royals' main hall, which connects our administrative offices and classrooms to our common room, gym, and first-grade wing, can be quite an obstacle for those who are on crutches or have a physical impairment, as well as for staff who have to transport materials between classes on a cart. For example, we don't have music or art, or art classrooms, so they are transporting those materials. The lift-in place requires maintenance and can be difficult to maneuver. The proposed renovation would eliminate the stairs and install a ramp, which would make our school universally accessible for any student or staff member. Last and importantly, we, we support implementing the elementary school renovation projects concurrently so that our facilities' concerns are addressed as soon as possible, especially as the district projects student at Royal to increase by as much as 40-plus students in the 24, 25 school year. The Royal families and staff appreciate your attention and timely response to implement the proposed renovation plan for Royal School. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Desai, thank you very much.
Marissa Herbers, you are unmuted and recognized.
Mrs. Herbers, you're on mute. Can you hear us?
There we go. Better?
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. Marissa Herbers, 5 Coach Lamp Lane, Darien. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight and for all of the hard work going into this proposal. I have two children at Hinley currently, and I am speaking tonight in favor of removing the portables at all three schools and making additional classroom space as well as a media center at Hinley. Uh, the portables pose both a health and safety risk to students and faculty. A health risk is these temporary structures are prone to poor ventilation, inadequate lighting, and mold. Portables are not secure and pose a serious security risk to our students in a number of ways, echoed here by several people tonight, especially in the event of a lockdown. In addition, we need to create the appropriate amount of space, square footage for our classrooms, for our growing class sizes. Not only are we, um, under the recommended amount today, but our schools continue to grow, and we will need additional space that is a long-term solution to replace the 30-year-old Band-Aid that we currently have in place. Thank you so much, uh, again, for the hard work on this proposal, the opportunity to speak tonight, and the thoughtful consideration.
Mrs. Herbers, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Emily Thomas, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Emily Thomas, 54 Relahan Road. Um, I just, um, I'd like to voice my support for demolishing the portables at Hinley and replacing them with an extension to the school. I had the, uh, opportunity to speak to a teacher who uses a portable as a full-time classroom at the school, who shared a number of the concerns that have been spoken about already. But just to echo especially what Belinda and, and Marissa have already said, we need a facility that is right-sized for our students, and I think we can say with confidence that, um, we need a bigger facility, um, after about a decade of, of using portables. The portables are noisy. So at Hinley, with recess and gym often outside, the children are noisy as they should be, enjoying themselves, but the classrooms in the portables, um, have a disruptive and distracted experience because of that, which is exacerbated during testing time periods. There are no bathrooms in the portables, which means that the children are missing lesson time when they are obviously trusted to go to the bathroom. It's particularly bad because of COVID, because the older children have to go upstairs to use the bathroom, which takes even longer. Um, this is also the case for the, the teachers. I think we talked about the safety concern, but I had this conversation quite easily with the teacher outside the portable, which, you know, it wouldn't necessarily have been me approaching the portable. So from a security point of view, it would be better to have the students in the same building where we can have better procedures in place to ensure that they are safe and secure. Also, from a safety point of view, if a teacher needs to attend to a single child, they don't have the luxury of being able to call out for assistance to another teacher with ease. They are very much on their own. Uh, and lastly, with regard to that, that isolation, that's felt from the children as well, because they are separate and in a separate building and away from the rest of the community. They have a sense of isolation from the rest of the student body. Finally, I just wanted to add that I would hope that, well, I know there's a lot of detail on the planning. I would hope that, that it's, it's viewed as imperative to complete the project quickly so that the students and the teachers obviously get the benefit of the beautiful extension that's being planned and the additional classrooms, but also aren't suffering from learning on a building site. So in summary, I think it would be better to have a safe and secure classrooms that fit the number of students and are housed in the same community as the rest of the student body. Thank you so much for putting this forward, and especially Dr. Adley for moving this along. Um, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas.
Username Brett, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Brett Silverman, 63 Edgerton Street. My two boys, uh, are in fourth and first grade at Royal. And I have a daughter who will be an incoming kindergartner next year. Um, we, we recently moved from Florida 18 months ago, uh, and, you know, frankly, couldn't believe that portables were relied so heavily on, uh, in a district of this quality. You know, I, I'm a product of the Florida public school system, and, you know, believe me, that's not me bragging. Uh, it's a complete disaster. And, um, you know, I spent most of my K through 12 years trudging from portable to portable, and, uh, you know, that invites a host of distractions and potential safety pitfalls for students. So we're glad to see that the district is proposing improvements to better accommodate the needs of the students and the staff by adding more space and making the building more universally accessible. Uh, and so, you know, we fully support the plans, but, um, you know, feel it's imperative to do these projects concurrently and not consecutively, which, uh, of course, would enable the improvements to be made more quickly. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Paul.
Robert Burke, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, everyone. Uh, Rob Burke, uh, 15 Seagate Road. Uh, my wife Andrea and I have two kids in Hinley now, a third grader and a first grader. One's starting in the fall, and then another one a couple of years after that. Uh, I'll be brief, but, um, we are supportive of this proposal, in, in particular, the removal of the portable classrooms. Uh, mostly important points have been made already, but the safety and security issue is by far the biggest one to me and to us. So in my view, this is a thoughtful plan to give our kids a safe environment, one that will help them continue to thrive, and, and my wife and I fully support it. Thanks for your time.
Robert, thank you very much.
Username Katie Atul Lublin, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. My name is Katie Lublin, and I live at 24 Maplewood Drive. As I've done many times in the past, I'd like to voice my support for the removal of all portable classrooms from Darien Educational Facilities. I have children at both Oxbridge and MMS. The proposed building renovations being discussed tonight will not affect the schools my children intend. Before moving to the Oxbridge District, I was a Royal parent for three years. This year, I've subbed in all of the other elementary schools, and I also sit on the Oxbridge Building Committee. It's easy to see how Hinley, Homes, and Royal are lacking in comparison to Tokenique and the plans for the new Oxbridge Building. I'm wholly supportive of improving the facilities for these three schools. While I'm encouraged by this Board's intention to take action and to work towards the mitigation of longstanding problems, the study on the table tonight does leave me with several questions. How would the proposed renovations change to the built, three buildings useful life, affect the master facilities plan, and the desire to stagger building replacements? What level of renovation, if any, is planned for the existing interior space of the schools? How far outside the estimated cost could site-drive improvements come in after further study? What is the intended structure of the building committee? Will it be one committee for each school or one combined for all three projects? If one combined, is the intention to have a parent from each of the three schools sit on the committee? How will fund appropriations be requested from the town as one project or three? I hope you'll take these questions into consideration. Thank you for your time and for working towards raising the standard of educational facilities in our town.
Thank you, Mrs. Lublin.
Can she repeat her address?
Katie, can you repeat your address real quick?
Sure, no problem. It's 24 Maplewood Drive.
Thank you.
Ms. Desai, you are unmuted and recognized.
Mrs. Desai, can you hear us?
I don't have any other comment. My internet is so bad, I can't get my hand down. I'm stalled.
Thank you. Thank you.
Matt Rainbolt, you are unmuted and recognized.
Can you hear us?
Yes. Uh, so, uh, yeah, Matt Rainbolt, 29 Beach Drive. Uh, I have a first grader at Hinley and a soon-to-be kindergartner. First off, I just wanted to give a big thank you to Dr. Hadley, Board of Educations, Board of Education, PTA, teachers, all those involved in this Board of Education renovation project and, and everything that goes into the, uh, the details and putting this together and the, and the decision process. So thanks for, um, you know, doing all that hard work. I'll keep my, my comments short. I think I might be the last person here, but, you know, we're in favor of the improvements being proposed here across Hinley and the other schools. Um, you know, Hinley's... You know, Henley's one of the oldest and most populated schools in the elementary system, and I don't know if you guys read the Darien Times like I do every Thursday, but, you know, Darien High School was ranked the top school in the state. So, you know, it'd be great to, you know, match that level of education that you guys have worked so hard for with the facilities that the kids deserve, and that's all I have.
Ryan Bull, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Teresa Vogt, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Teresa Vogt, 22 Circle Road. So I'm an old parent. I will very soon be one of those people who no longer has children in the school. So these are three projects that don't affect my children at all. My daughter is a 2020 DHS grad, actually started kindergarten in the old Tokenique building. That's how old I am. And my son is a junior at the high school. But as a taxpayer, as a resident of Darien, we should all be supporting these projects. The fact that these portables, some of them went into place when I was actually in college, and the fact that they still exist after Sandy Hook is simply unbelievable. So again, as a taxpayer, whose last kid is almost out of the district, this is a project we all need to support.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogt.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay, we'll give a second so you can double-check that. We good?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Sure.
You know, this isn't the first time we've heard the concerns about having, you know, just one building committee versus three. So if we could, as an administration, as a body, maybe focus on that issue as we go forward. I think this is going to be a unique project that I think is pretty obvious we all support, but I just want to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's. Heard this from the chairman of F and B and a couple of speakers this evening as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Senior. No further public comment, Michelle?
No more raised hands.
Thank you all for joining us and for listening this evening on a Thursday night. We appreciate it. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Parent, second by Mr. Maroni. All those in favor, that is unanimous. Thank you all, and have a good evening.